Thank you for coming to the Acton Annual Town Meeting. We appreciate it on such a nice day after a rainy week. We will go through the normal administrative things that we normally go through. We ought to start out with a pledge allegiance to the flag. I think there's a flag up here. Maybe the Fire Chief can lead us in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of folks here who are non-residents who may need to speak or wish to speak. The town clerk, Jennifer Rue, the town treasurer, Michelle Rundy, Rachel Anne. And also, just, so if we have no objection to that, then we'll allow them to speak if it's necessary. Is there any objection to that?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody here from the Falls Lake Association?
Okay, Falls Lake Association has an article. Is there anybody here from Falls Lake Association? So far, none. So when we get to that article, if there's anybody that wants to speak and isn't a resident, they'll have to, we'll get to the residency thing in a minute here. Also, we're fortunate to have the chief deputy here today, Major King. And do you want to bring greetings from the sheriff's department or just address the crew for a second?
That would be great.
Right up here to the mic.
I don't need your mic, but I will use it. Thank you very much for allowing me to have a couple of words. I appreciate the support from the town of Acton. It's my understanding that our deputy in charge is doing a good job here. But just remember, when you have a concern, please bring it to our attention. If there's something that you want him to know about, we're not going to find out about it unless you tell him. Also, I'm passing out the statistics. And I know you get a lot of paper these days, but if you take a moment to take a look at these statistics, I think before you voted for the contract deputy, I told you that crime rate will go up, or it'll look like it's going up, because we're going to have a lot more calls for service. But if you take a look at the stat sheet that I sent you, and why is this mic so high? I think I need to grow a few. But if you take a look at that, we've had 480, almost 500 calls for service in Acton this year. In all the other years, it was, when I looked at the past years, it was a lot less. So if you have those past years, take a look at it. Take a look at how many building checks for this year, and how long we had the contract deputy. It hasn't been a full year. 165 building checks. Community policing contacts, 40. Directed patrols, I think it was, that looked 31. And just so that you know what a directed patrol is, there was a young lady that approached me earlier, and I'm going to make sure that Deputy Shaw gets together with her. She said, "There's speeding cars on Milton," I forgot the road. She said, "There's speeding cars in this road, and it's always around 2:00." That's great information for us. You don't need the plate numbers, but if you tell us that there's speeding cars at that particular time, that eliminates us having to put out the speed trailer to find out when the speeding cars are. So when we say directed patrol, that's what the deputies do. For a specific incident, they'll go to that area, and he'll run right out there in the afternoon. So that's really great information, and it's really helping us. And that's really the core of community policing, where you're telling us what you need, and we're doing that. And then you come back to us, and we work together on a public problem. So again, I appreciate that help. I appreciate any of the good communication. I know that Dave is extremely happy working here at Acton Chapley. In fact, he was scheduled to come here, but he's following up. We had five camper deliveries in Chapley. It appears to be kids, nothing was stolen, just kind of nuisance. And he got a lead, and he's working on that right now. But before the end, I'm certain that he's going to stop by. Are there any questions for the sheriff's or Bob?
Thank you, Major King. Appreciate it. Super. The statistics are available in the back. I think the papers that he has in his hand, if anybody's interested. Okay, let's go through the normal procedure. We're going to run the meeting according to the main moderator's manual, which is a very simple process for running the meeting. Simple is better. It's not any different than what we normally do. The most important part is that everybody gets a chance to speak that wants to. And if there's multiple requests to speak, we'll make sure that the people who haven't spoken get to talk first. We have a voter card, the purple card that everybody received coming in. It's going to be your ticket to vote. Okay, so when it's time to vote, you need to raise your hand either for or against something. Purple card needs to come up in your hand. That means we'll count that vote. When it comes time to cast a written ballot for some of the articles in the beginning for committee members, you need to bring the purple card with you with your ballot. Put it in the box indicating who you wish to nominate or vote for for each of these folks. And when you come up with your written ballot, you need to bring your purple card with you. Okay, now you have five colored pieces of paper that we're giving. We'll deal with those committee nominations first. And we'll start out, unless there's other questions right now, with Article 3. We'll read that, and then we'll have a couple of comments from the chairman. Clark reminds me we haven't dealt with Article 2 yet. Thank you. So when we get to Article 3, the chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee has a couple of comments he wants to make. Town election results. There were 536 ballots cast. The board of selectmen assessed their overseer for a three-year term. Ted Kryzak was elected. 395 votes, over 40 writings, 101 blanks. Road commissioner, Northern District, three-year term. Scott Mooney, 356. David Winchell, 176, and four writings. School committee, three-year term. Connect burst, 430 votes, 22 writings, 84 blanks. And that is the result of the Tuesday's election. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to Article 3. To choose three members of the Warrant Finance Committee for a two-year term. Tom Chase, Percival Lowell, and Holly Mooney's terms have expired. And to choose one alternate member for a two-year term, and one alternate member for a one-year term. So I think that, so that takes up three of these ballots that you have here. The purple one, the gray one, and the light green. I think, do we, we're going to need to do these separately? Yeah, we're going to need to do these things separately. So we're now open for nominations for the Warrant Finance Committee. But before we do that, Paul Payton, who has struggled as chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee for a couple of years, has a couple of comments to make.
First of all, legally, the town body can elect anyone to any of these committees that they so choose, regardless of whether they've been nominated, their names have been put up there, any other circumstance. So that said, I've been on the Warrant Finance Committee for three years now, and I can't really recall a time when there hasn't been a struggle to make quorum, which would be four members voting at a meeting. So I respectfully request that before any Warrant Finance names get voted upon, or certainly if you're going to nominate someone, please have a foreknowledge that they are willing to serve. Or alternately, if they're here today, and they are willing to express the fact that they're willing to serve before their names go up there, that would greatly help the process. Two years ago, there was an ordinance that was put in in order to hopefully get rid of the personnel issues, allowing two alternate members in addition to the six standing members for Warrant Finance. Last year was the first year it was in effect, and within two weeks of town meeting, the two alternates were moved to standing members, and we had no alternates for the whole year. So we're moving in the right direction, but if we can have qualified nominations, not necessarily speaking to the qualifications of the person, but just the fact that they're willing to serve, it would greatly help. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just want to reemphasize, this meeting can elect whoever they want, whether their names are up there or not. But it would be helpful if we had thoughtful nominations, I think is Paul's message. So the foreknowledge of willingness to serve is kind of an important thing. Okay, so we're now looking at the purple nominating thing. We need to nominate three members of the Warrant Finance Committee. Are there nominations? Dennis.
Earl Foster.
It was Earl Foster?
Earl.
Okay. Other nominations for the Warrant Finance Committee?
Holly Mooney.
Holly Mooney. Other nominations for the Warrant Finance Committee? Tom Cashin.
Percy Lowell.
Percival Lowell. Percival has declined, at least as far as communications with Jennifer. Okay? Dick Neal?
No, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Tom Cashin?
Tom Chase.
Tom Chase. Other nominations for Warrant Finance Committee? We need to elect three members. See, none, because the nominations are closed. What we want you all to do now is to take the purple. Paul, you have something more to add?
Yes, I'd like to point out that Mr. Chase has been on the committee for the last two years, and he's been to two workshops and no meetings. So I'm not quite sure about his willingness to serve.
Okay, with that in mind, are there further nominations? Tom Chase?
Just a question.
Tom Cashin, sorry.
A question for Paul. How often does that committee meet?
The question concerns how often does the committee meet?
It depends on the number of special elections. Generally speaking, we can count on, say, three meetings. Last couple of years, it's been a good, excuse me, four meetings because you have the initial one, and perhaps a dozen workshops overall. And those would be clustered in generally late, late part of the year. Generally speaking, most of them are going to be January to March timeframe, or January to April timeframe. So it's certainly not an even number spread throughout the year, but roughly a dozen workshops and maybe four meetings.
All right, additional nominations for the Warrant Finance Committee. Mary.
Joan Nass.
Joan Nass. I guess I don't have a veto on that. She's smiling, so we're good. Chip.
Tom Cashin.
Tom Cashin. Other nominations? Okay, I think we've done it. Thank you. Can you see the name? Some of the folks are here. Tom is here. Tom, you want to identify your, I think everybody knows who you are now. Joan is here. Joan, raise your, thank you. Holly, I didn't see Holly here. Earl Foster, I'm not sure, is Earl here?
No.
No. Tom Chase is not here. I think we've gotten everybody that's here. Paul?
If I can usurp another moment here. I know that Holly had an issue with scheduling this year. I'm not entirely sure what her thoughts are about next year. I had thought that she was more on the negative than the positive, but that's simply my impression at this time.
All right, Scott. Yeah, we got to be careful we're not trying to bias the vote here, so Scott.
Well, she should work as an alternate, but she does work a lot of nights, so it is tough for her to get to the meetings.
Okay, so Holly is, Holly is still a viable candidate. I want to make sure we're not restricting what you do or don't do here. We've gotten some input, which is helpful, but she's still a viable candidate, as is anybody. You choose to write in, okay? All right, so let's go. Write in the purple, the light purple thing. There's up to three names on there, okay? If you put the same name twice, you're not going to get any more out of it. Okay, what we're going to do at each of these, we got another vote. Everybody voted on the Warrant Finance Committee that wants to? Okay, what we're going to do on this one is count so that we know who got elected with the Warrant Finance Committee before we deal with the two-year and the one-year alternate, okay? Then we'll know who's available. So what we're going to do is we go to Article 4 right now. Come back to Article 3 and finish it, unless there's objection. Okay, Article 4, to choose three members to the town road committee for a two-year term. Cindy Hart, David Langley, and instead of Robert Boar, that's incorrect. That should be Dick Neal's name. Their terms have expired. Okay, is that clear? So the article where it says Robert F. Boar's term has expired, it should be Richard Hay. So we need to elect on the pink ballot here, three members of the road committee. And so now we're open for nominations to the road committee. Scott?
I'm going to nominate Cindy Hart.
Cindy Hart is nominated. Are there other nominations? Nancy?
David Langley.
Are there other nominate, I'm sorry.
David Langley.
David Langley. Dick Neal?
Bob Smith.
Bob Smith. Jack?
Dennis Long.
Other nominations for the road committee? See, none. We have, some of the folks are here. Cindy is here, you want to raise your hand? Dick Neal is here. David Langley, I don't think is here. Bob Smith? Who's the other?
Dennis Long.
Dennis is here, Dennis Long. Okay, I think we've forgotten everybody that's here. All right, no more nominations for road committee, so we're going to go through the same process. You need to write up to three names on the pink ballot. If you put the same name down more than once, it's not going to count as more than one vote. Up to three names, you don't have to put three names on. Get your ballots filled out and bring them up with your pink card, purple card, excuse me. Keep dropping ballots. Has everyone voted for town road committee that chooses to do so? I got one ballot coming up here. Two ballots. You can only vote once. Oh, here's two. I'm sorry. Okay, everybody's voted on Article 4. Article 5, we're going to do the same thing. We're moving on to the next article, get the ballots, nominations and ballots. Counting is going on, and we'll go back to Article 3 as soon as we know what's the results of the election. Article 5, to choose two members to the town forest committee. Wesley Ham and Mark Hurst's terms have expired. So now we are looking at the blue ballot, and we're now open for nominations to the town forest committee. Other nominations to the town forest committee? Tom?
I was in conversation with Mark Hurst, and he is willing to serve again. If I'd like to put his name.
Mark Hurst is nominated. Yes, Mr. Mlowey.
Wesley Ham, Wesley had to work today.
Okay, Wesley Ham. Other nominations to the town forest committee? See, okay, see, none. We'll just close the nominations and allow people to put up to two names on the blue ballot. Yeah, if we get three ballots, if we want to cast three, then we can, we'll go with that. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Okay, as soon as we have the results on Article 3, we'll go back to that. We still have to elect an alternate for one year and an alternate for two years to the Warrant Finance Committee. All right, all the voting is done, unless somebody wants to cast the ballot still for the town forest committee, I think we're closed on that one. No, we're moving on. Let's go to Article 6. Okay, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to execute and deliver amended solid waste handling agreement between and among the town of Acton, Cella Waste Systems Agency, and pine tree wasting. To replace the existing solid waste agreement between and among the town, Cassella and Merck for the balance of the existing agreement, agreements, terms through June 30th, 2025. A copy of the proposed agreements is to file in the town clerk's office. The board of selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. The finance committee recommends approval of the article as written. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second, it's been moved in second, is that Article 6 be approved as written? Are there questions or comments on Article 6?
This is because the Merck plant and Vitterford flows down, and as of January 1st, we would have had no place to put our material, our dump material. And so we entered into a contract with all the other communities that were using Merck, and it actually lowered our tipping fees from $89, which is what it would have gone to in January, to $70.25. So we downed to $70.25 with only an increase of $1 per year for the remainder of the 25-year agreement. The other thing I'd like to note is the selectmen that were in place at the time of the contract were, went forward and put money into this account to get the original contract to pay for legal fees. And there was enough money left in the account that this cost us nothing and saved us a lot of money.
Other comments or questions on Article 6? Paul?
Okay, so the high points on this, basically, this is originally a 25-year contract. There are 13 years remaining. We were looking at an increase in the tipping fee, and what's actually happened is that this contract that you're about to vote on now, I believe, is already working, right? Since January 1st, right?
We signed, we signed a temporary contract that went from January until today, and now the town has to approve it, or then the contract is null and void.
Thank you. And so basically, what we have is 13 years remaining on the original 25-year contract, and this covers those 13 years. We are going down in the tipping fee from what we had with our original contract, and it goes up $1 per ton, I believe, yeah, $1 per ton each year. And so to the point where in, say, seven years from now, it's going to be roughly what it is now. And then from that point on, it's going to be increasing slightly every year. But overall, it seems a pretty good deal with no issues. I didn't read through the contract, I'm not a lawyer, but didn't see anything that raised a hair on the back of my neck. So it seems a good deal for the town. Thank you.
The other thing to note was with the old contract, it could go up 3% per year, so we're saving quite a bit.
So I have a question. Where does our garbage go there?
It's going to Westburg first. I'm glad you asked that. It's going to Westburg first, where they're going to tear everything open and get any other recyclable material that we put into the compactor. Then after that's done, then it's going up to, known to me, to a landfill. I'm not sure what town that's in.
Pine tree? Okay, other questions on Article 6? See, none. Motion on Article 6 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple card. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 6 passes as written. Let's go back to Article 3 now. We have the results on the Warrant Finance Committee. So the three highest vote getters are Cashin, Nass, and Mooney. So those three now become members of the Warrant Finance Committee. What we need to do next is finish Article 3, and I think we'll do the, we need nominations for a person who will function as the alternate for a two-year term. Other nominations, Nancy? Tom Gore is nominated. He's not saying no, so that's good. Are there other nominations? Tom Cashin?
Chip Finell.
Chip Finell for two-year.
No, thanks, I can't, sorry.
Can't.
But I appreciate it, Tom. You're a buddy.
Are there other nominations for a two-year term to the Warrant Finance Committee? See, none. We have one nomination, and I think we'd be happy to take at least three ballots. This will be the gray ballot. We need at least three, so I see you need a couple more people writing a name on gray ballot. Okay, thank you. I think the voting is now closed on that part of Article 3. We'll be happy to announce the results forthwith. We now need nominations for Warrant Finance Committee alternate for a one-year term. Nominations, Tom Cashin?
Mr. Chip Finell.
Chip Finell. He declines.
I really appreciate the thought, Tom.
Are there other nominations? Yes, sir?
Debbie Casey.
I'm sorry?
Debbie Casey.
Debbie Casey, okay. Other nominations, Jack?
Dick Neal.
Dick Neal. This is for the one-year alternate to the Warrant Finance Committee. Are there other nominations?
Earl Foster.
Earl Foster is nominated. Other nominations for the one-year alternate to the Warrant Finance Committee? See, none. We'll close nominations and go through the process. Then we're looking at the green, the light green ballot. It's got space for one name on there. So one name only. If you put two names on, neither one's going to count. Okay, one name. Bring your purple card with you. Bring your purple card with you. All the ballots in on one-year alternate to the Warrant Finance Committee. Is everyone voting on that light green ballot that desires to vote? Thank you. Okay, as soon as we tally the votes on this, then the other ones, we'll report on those as we move along. I see Deputy Shaw is here. Good morning. Anybody that wants to talk to him? Maybe I shouldn't offer this. Anybody that wants to talk to Deputy Shaw? He's available for, at least right now, in the back of the room, so. Okay, let's move on to Article Seven. Article Seven, see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to appropriate and expend monies from the undesignated fund balance with the advice of the Warrant Finance Committee for the purchase of equipment or to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses in emergencies that occurred during the fiscal year 2014 with a maximum expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance and Warrant Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Seven? I make a motion, we approve the article as written. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article Seven as written. Are there questions or comments on Article Seven? Paul?
This is a housekeeping article, one that shows up every year. And it is the same as, other than the year reference, is the same as last year.
Questions or comments on Article Seven? See none. The motion on Article Seven is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Seven is approved as written. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to reimburse the members of the active fire and rescue for any national disaster or state of emergency or other emergency situation that exceeds eight hours in duration at the same rate as established by Article Twenty-four to be assigned at the fire chief's discretion. Firefighters or rescue members, same as laborer, fire chiefs, same as road commissioners, funds to come from undesignated fund balance. The board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Articles Eight?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded on Article Eight to approve the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article Eight? Paul?
Another housekeeping article, and this is the same as last year, including the article number that it's referring to. Thanks.
Other comments or questions on Article Eight? See none. The motion on Article Eight is to adopt, is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple card. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Eight passes as written. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of surplus town loaned equipment having a value of less than or equal to five hundred dollars on such terms and conditions as they deem advisable and to execute any necessary documents to accomplish said purpose. All equipment having value of more than five hundred dollars shall be put out to public bid. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Nine?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Nine as written. Comments, Paul?
Another housekeeping article, same as last year.
Any other comments or questions on Article Nine? See none. The motion on Article Nine is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple card. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Nine is passed as written. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to put the funds received from the sale of tax-acquired property during the year, which is 2013 to 2014, into the capital improvement fund. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Ten?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Ten as written. Other comments, Paul?
Another housekeeping article. The year references have been bumped by one to reflect the later year.
Other comments or questions on Article Ten?
We just sold a property on Thursday night for five thousand dollars. The taxes will come out of that five thousand dollars and then the remainder will go into the account if this is voted.
Other comments or questions on Article Ten? See none. The motion on Article Ten is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Ten is passed as written. Article Eleven, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sell any tax-acquired property to issue a quitclaim deed for the same. Sale to be by sealed biz or public auction if to other than the owner of record at the time of foreclosure. And no selectman during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town on account of non-payment of taxes unless the owner of record at time of foreclosure was a selectman or the son, daughter, spouse, or parent of the selectman. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Eleven?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Eleven as written. Are there comments, Paul?
This is another annual article, same as last year.
Are there other comments on Article Eleven or questions? See none. The motion on Article Eleven is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Eleven is passed as written. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen upon request of the treasurer to allow the treasurer to waive foreclosure of a tax lien on a specified property for a specified year with references to the tax lien certificate reported in the York County Registry of Deeds in circumstances where the board of selectmen determine that is the best interest of the town of active to waive foreclosure. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Twelve?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Twelve as written. Are there comments, Paul?
Another housekeeping article, same as last year.
Are there other comments or questions on Article Twelve?
The reason we need this is it happened in Milton quite a few years ago with the old tannery site. It turned out to be a toxic waste site. And the town of Milton had the opportunity to foreclose and they chose not to so the town wouldn't have to pay for the cleanup. So that's why we need to have that in here for us.
Other comments or questions on Article Twelve? See none. The motion on Article Twelve is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Twelve is approved as written. We've now got the results of some of the earlier elections, which I'll announce now before we go on. So for two members of the Town Forest Committee for three-year terms, Wesley Ham and Mark Hurd are reelected. For the Town Road Committee, for three members, we have Cindy Card, David Langley, and Dick Neal reelected. For one alternate to the one-year alternate, excuse me. Now, we have for the Warrant Finance Committee, the two-year alternate term, Tom Gore. And for the one-year alternate to the Warrant Finance Committee, we have Debbie Casey. Okay, any questions about that? Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to have real estate and personal property taxes first payment come due on October fifteenth, 2013, and the second payment on April fifteenth, 2014. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Thirteen?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article Thirteen as written. Are there comments, Paul?
Another housekeeping article. The dates have been bumped by a year.
Other comments on Article Thirteen or questions? See none. The motion on Article Thirteen is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Thirteen passes as written. Article Fourteen, to see what interest the town will vote to charge on all taxes after October fifteenth, 2013, and April fifteenth, 2014. Maximum rate of interest allowed is seven percent per annum. Board of selectmen recommend seven percent per annum. Finance Committee recommends seven percent per annum. Is there a motion on Article Fourteen?
I make a motion, we set the rate at seven percent per annum.
It's been moved and seconded on Article Fourteen to adopt the motion at seven percent per annum. Are there additional comments or questions on Article Fourteen?
Article Fourteen is also a housekeeping article. The dates have been bumped to reflect what's in Article Thirteen. And the seven percent is what we use for the last few years.
All those, the motion on Article Fourteen is to adopt the seven percent per annum. Are there additional questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Fourteen passes at seven percent per annum. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at three percent pursuant to thirty-six MRSA 506A. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Fifteen as written. Are there comments, Paul?
This has turned into a housekeeping article. This is the third year, I believe, that we've had it. And essentially is the same all three years.
Motion is, are there other comments on Article Sixteen? Excuse me, Article Fifteen. See none. The motion on Article Fifteen is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Fifteen passes as written. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes before the tax commitment. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Sixteen?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as written. Paul?
Another housekeeping article.
Can somebody explain when, I mean, it seems obvious, but when does tax commitment happen? Somebody shows up on, say, sometime in September. Right. They try to prepay the tax. They're not gonna get the interest because you've already committed to taxes, right?
Right.
Okay, when is tax commitment?
We'll start as soon as the audit is done. And they're going to start working on that until October fifteenth. Our hope is to commit taxes by the end of August.
Okay, so that's a pretty tip, August, early September. Usually August, right? So anybody?
We have to have, what, forty-five days before the October fifteenth?
So for those people who, it's really tax commitment, it's not when the date taxes are due. You gotta, if you're planning to get the interest benefit from this, you gotta be worried about the August date, not not sometime in September usually. Okay, the motion on Article Sixteen is to approve the article as written. Are there other comments or questions? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Sixteen is approved as written. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to make application for and execute any documents related to any grant or donation, to accept any grants or donations or any fees and appropriate such funds for their designated use. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Seventeen?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as written. Are there comments, Paul?
This also is an article that's essentially been unchanged for the last couple of years.
Are there other additional comments on Article Seventeen or questions? See none. The motion on Article Seventeen is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Seventeen is approved as written. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all the funds received from the state for snowmobile registrations to the snowmobile clubs for maintaining their snowmobile trails. My condition that those trails be open to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge. And authorize the board of selectmen to enter into an agreement with said clubs under such terms and conditions as they may deem advisable for that purpose. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Eighteen?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
So motion, it's been seconded on Article Eighteen to approve the article as written. Are there comments or questions? Paul?
Article Eighteen, right? Yes. This is another housekeeping article. It was changed substantially a few years back, but the last three years, it's been the way you see it for you.
Other comments or questions on Article Eighteen? Motion is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Make your hands down those opposed. Article Eighteen is approved as written. Article Nineteen, we're getting now into the money articles. And just to remind everybody, these are closed articles. So your options here are to lower the amounts. There's no option on most of them to increase the amount. These are closed articles. Somebody wants to make a motion to raise or appropriate less money? That's open, so that's an amendment. You can't go higher. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise six hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars and appropriate six hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for the general government to be expended as follows. And I'm not gonna read the entire list. Thank you. And then it's an interesting explanation, which is really not part of the article. The remaining balance to be funded with two thousand from cable revenues and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirteen from FD capital improvement funds for the expenses related to their use. Board of selectmen recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article Nineteen?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded on Article Nineteen to adopt the article as written. Are there comments or questions, Paul?
This article, if you take, you'll see that it's stated in a net and gross manner, the raising versus the appropriating. The difference being that if you take the cable revenues and the fire department capital improvement fund numbers that you see on the bottom there and add it to municipal management, you'll go from the raising figure at the top there to the appropriating figure. So the only thing that's netted out is the municipal management portion. And if you take the gross numbers, what we're talking about is an increase of eleven point six percent. And that's generally speaking, a result of juggling some of the accounts to, from other sections of the budget. Mainly, we're talking about loans. The, there's a window loan, assuming window repairs. There's law enforcement services, fire truck purchase, repel. Those have all been moved from other portions of the budget to see the increase. But essentially, as far as the overall budget goes, it's relatively flat.
Other comments or questions on Article Nineteen?
Yeah, the law enforcement services are not alone. That's our first time putting it into the budget because the town voted at that special town meeting. So last year, we took the twenty thousand dollars for that contract out of the undesignated fund. Now it's on the warrant as part of the budget for the remaining time of the contract that we have with the sheriff.
Other comments or questions, Jack? Article Nineteen?
Just a quick question. On the cable revenues, I thought cable money wasn't supposed to be spent on the cable. Can somebody answer that for me?
Yeah, you're right. What we've done is we've taken two thousand dollars from the cable revenue to put into the town clerk, tax collector's job because of the work that she does on the cable. We have a cable manager that does the work. But our town clerk has to do a lot of work during her normal day. So rather than charge out of the town accounts for the time that she spends on the cable, we're taking
time that she spends on the cable, we're taking $2,000 for the year for her that she does slides on, on the cable. If we have a short power outage and the cable channel goes down, she has to go in and get it all reset back up again. So we're just making sure that her time is being paid for from the account that she's working out of, and that's what the $2,000 is for.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on Article 19? Seeing none, the motion on Article 19 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 19 is approved as written. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,108 for health and welfare. This includes $108 for the health officer stipend and $10,000 for general assistance. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded on Article 20, uh, to approve the article as written. Comments? Paul.
Um, this one is going down 33% as a result of the decrease in general assistance from last year.
Other questions or comments on Article 20? Seeing none, the article, the motion on Article 20 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 20 passes as written. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $157,997 for public safety to be expended as follows.
We made the reading.
And it talks about the various parts of it. The Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Uh, what's, is there a motion on Article 21?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second. The move is seconded on Article 21 to approve the article as written. Are there comments? Paul. Now, this one is going up one and a half percent. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, the motion on Article 21 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 21 is approved as written. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,800 to purchase SCBA, which is self-contained breathing equipment for the fire department. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Is there a motion on Article 22?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded on Article 22 to approve the article as written. Are there comments? Paul.
Uh, this article first appeared last year, um, is probably going to be on the, next year as well. Uh, essentially, it's a rotation out of either, um, legally required swap outs of equipment after it's a certain age. Uh, and in this case, there's also a factor of the design of the equipment, um, that is not necessarily compatible with other fire departments. So we're trying to kind of bring everything up to a common standard.
Other questions or comments on Article 22? Seeing none, the motion on Article 22 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple card. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 22 passes as written. Article 23, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $18,276 to add to the capital improvement fund for the fire department for the purchase of a new fire truck. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded on Article 23 to approve the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 23? Paul.
Okay, so the last couple of years, um, we've put $75,000, actually, last year was 75, and then the last couple of years before then was $50,000 a year, uh, to fire department, uh, capital improvement fund for the purchase of a fire truck. Um, this past year, we have started the process of purchasing a fire truck, um, and the $18,276 represents the net of the $75,000 minus the, the loan payment for this year for the fire truck. So essentially, the intent is to, uh, have the cost of the town be $75,000 for the fire truck and the remainder, you know, that is not spent on the loan is going into the capital improvement fund.
Are there questions or comments on Article 23?
And that is a decrease of this article of 75, excuse me, 75.6%.
The rest of the comments?
I have a question. So does the capital improvement fund that the money is going into, is that specifically designated for a future fire truck purchase, 15, 20 years down the line?
Yes, it is, because we used all the money that was in the fire truck capital improvement fund to purchase the new one that we have now. And when we had the special town meeting and asked if we could buy the fire truck, we told them at that time that we would continue to do, fund, uh, $75,000 towards a future fire truck, but take the payment out each year for the five years that we have loan payments so that the budget would not change, but there would still be put money towards a new truck.
Additional questions or comments on Article 23? Seeing none, the motion on Article 23 is to approve the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 23 passes as written. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of public ways according to the following schedule.
We made the reading.
Not going to do that. Going to read it, thank you. Uh, so we're gonna, let's see, we need to read anything more. They just, in addition to this chart here, toward the bottom, it talks about cost of operation. The above rates are based on fuel prices up to and including $4.30 per gallon. Town acting will pay an additional dollar for each 25 cent increase per gallon based on the fuel prices at Boonies and Chapley on each Sunday. Such price will determine the fuel allowance for the following week's warrant. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written with four yes, zero no one abstentions. Is there a motion on Article 24?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded on Article 24 to adopt the article as written. Are there comments or questions?
Okay, we've used this format, uh, last couple of years. Uh, the only thing that has changed from last year is if you look at the secondary heading, winter road maintenance equipment near the bottom, uh, there's a two-wheel drive and a four-wheel drive, $26,000 gross vehicle weight and over. Um, both of those numbers are up $4.50 per hour from last year, uh, but the remainder of this article, including the fuel costs, uh, are the same.
Are there other questions or comments on Article 24?
The way this is written, uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, I don't believe it allows for the price to be reduced if the price of fuel goes down. It says if you can go up and the prices, uh, are checked on Sundays, uh, but it doesn't say anything in the article that the price goes down to, uh, $3 a gallon, that we can reduce the, uh, money.
Good question. Can anybody address the question on the appears to be, uh, upper limit, but no lower limit or no ability to go down?
I mean, I appreciate the fact you're probably not decreasing it, but what happens is the way of voting.
Okay, so we have one of our road commissioners willing to address this?
These, these rates are based on pretty much the fuel now.
Need to get a little closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. Talk a little louder, I guess. These are prices based on the average fuel, fuel price we've been having for the last two years. When we go over the 430 a gallon, we get a dollar increase. When it goes back down below the 430, it goes back to the original rates.
I appreciate that, but the article, in the article, we're voting, we're voting to increase it, but there's no vote here to decrease it if the rates were down. So I'm not sure that, that legally, if the town can decrease the rates, if the only thing we've done is voted to increase them.
Well, as, when we meet up these rates, we weren't figuring that diesel's going to end up dropping a substantial amount, so, uh, we didn't feel, we needed that, because as we know, um, fuel goes up quite a bit, comes down a little, so, um, we did a little bit of that. I mean, the pressure there-
The question here is, do you get reimbursed for your fuel, what you pay for, or do you actually put in what this article allows?
What this article does is, when, each piece of equipment has its rate, it's a set rate, this, this part of the article only is in effect if the fuel price goes over 430 a gallon, you get an extra dollar per hour for each piece of equipment, which really doesn't help a whole lot, especially if it goes, you know, if it goes to $5, well-
So you don't get reimbursed for your fuel either? Your fuel costs are included in the rate, is what they're saying?
Yes, it's included into the rate, so the only way you'd ever get a decrease would be go back down below the 430.
And like I said, I appreciate that. Uh, and I know this is how we've done it in the past, uh, and maybe, uh, the Selectmen could check with MMA and see if we can legally, uh, decrease it if the only thing that people have voted is to increase it.
Yeah, are there other comments, Ted?
Yeah, what's happened is the dollar per hour is if, if, if it goes up that much, um, but when we get the Sunday rates on how much the gas is, they can't come in and charge you that extra dollar for that week, so it's week to week. So say, um, let's see, one of the ones, um, all right, um, you got, uh, four-wheel drive at 49, 80 per hour, the gas goes up, they charge you $50, uh, $50.80 an hour for that week. The next week, if the gas goes down, they go back down to the 49, 80 per hour. It's automatic.
Maybe, I guess I'm not, I'm not explaining it.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying. You want, you want to see it in writing because it doesn't say that, but it, it actually does happen, but I see what you're saying. It should be, because we're saying it goes up a dollar if this happens, it publishes something that says if it goes down, then this year happened, right? You're right, it hasn't been in here and, and, you know, I appreciate that's what's happening, yeah, but I'm not so sure legally that we can do that. We, we- We can definitely check with MMA for next year. Tom, Paul.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make a motion for amend the article under cost of operation. Delete the pay and additional and insert the adjusted. Delete increased and insert change.
Okay, let's, let's go through this. So we're under cost of operation, what is your proposed amendment to do? Which line are we on now?
We're on cost of operation. The above rates are based on fuel price up to and including 430 per gallon. Town acting will pay an adjusted rate of $1 for each 25 cent change per gallon based on fuel prices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So you're taking the word additional out and you're putting the word adjusted in?
Correct. Uh, I'm thinking, you know, pay and additional and insert adjusted, be adjusted.
Okay, so the town of acting will adjust, will pay an adjusted, no, okay, it's not making any sense here, I think, at this point.
Will pay an adjusted, I'm, I'm sorry, will be adjusted. How does that mean?
Be adjusted.
Be adjusted $1 for each-
Be adjusted by $1 for each 25 cent increase per gallon based-
For each 25 cent change.
25 cent change, okay. Okay, so the, your proposed amendment is going to read, under the cost of operations, I understand it, will read as follows. The above rates are based on fuel prices up to and including $4.30 per gallon. The town of acting will, will-
Pay an adjusted rate of $1.
Will pay an adjusted rate. $1 for each 25 cent change per gallon based on the fuel prices based at Boonies and the rest of it's the same.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that proposal? I mean, it's been moved and seconded. Let's have comments on the proposed, uh, change. Paul.
Um, I had thought that Dennis originally had intended to mean that if the price goes below 430 a gallon, you know, would we pay less than what's stated there? But at the moment, it still says, uh, fuel prices up to and including, um, so that way, that means that it will never go lower than what you see on those rates, but it, it does make provision for adjusting upward and downward from 430 per gallon and, and, you know, and above, basically, and then coming back down again. Um, so essentially, this, uh, makes clearer what we think is already happening on this article, but it doesn't actually change the intent of the article from what we tell.
Other comments or questions? Scott.
I just want to say, uh, last one, I think there was maybe a two-week period of that, and then David and I-
Get closer to the mic.
There was like a two-week period of that, we went over $4.30 last year. It's only a dollar increase, it's not very much, but we do keep our books right to stuff, and when it does go back down, we go right back down to what it originally reads.
Additional comments, other comments on Article 24? There, no, we're not talking about the amendment. Yeah. We're hanging, hanging on here, we're-
Checking to see if that was originally by the way it was used.
Checking to see who originally wrote this art, uh, two years ago.
Wasn't me, but-
So Ted, you're okay? Do you have other comments on this amendment?
No, I was just checking to see if that was changed by the attorney two years ago when we had the whole warrant worked up, and it wasn't, that's been, the language for longer than that, it's been a long time.
So we're still taking comments on the proposed amendment. Okay, so what we're, what's going to happen here is we're going to vote on the amendment, depending on the outcome of that, we're going to vote on the article. Okay, so the proposed before us is amending Article 24 under the section toward the bottom, under cost of operation. Instead of what's written there, it's going to read, the above rates based on fuel prices up to and including $4.30 per gallon. Town acting will pay an adjusted rate of $1 for each 25 cent change per gallon based on the fuel price at Boonies and Chapley on each Sunday. Everybody clear on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of amending Article 24 as stated, please raise your purple cards. Hands down, those opposed. Uh, I think the amendment passes. Let's do this, just to make sure, let's do this again. We have a lot of people not voting, is what's happening here. So the motion to amend Article 24 as stated, we're going to count this, we're going to get some counters up here. What's happening here is we have a few people voting and a lot of people just contemplating this apparently. All those, you have additional comment?
Mr. Moderator, uh, all this amendment, uh, that Tom brought forward, all this is doing is allowing, uh, the treasurer to legally do, uh, what they've been doing all along. And this is in no way, uh, saying that there's been anything, uh, that the road commissioners haven't been doing things right. This is just, uh, as far as our concern, and I believe is Mr. Gore, is just a legal thing, uh, just to give the treasurer the right to, uh, do what they've been doing all along.
Okay, thank you. In front of us now is the motion, we're going to count this vote, so it's a motion to adopt the amendment, make those wording changes under the cost of operation. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your purple cards. Okay, hands down. Hang on here just a minute. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your purple, purple cards. It's more clear now, I think, yeah, it's more clear now, the amendment does pass, okay? I think we have a lot of folks thinking about what they want to do. So the amendment, amendment to Article 24 passes, and now we're going to go to an amended Article 24. We just passed the amendment, now we're going to adopt the article as amended. So the motion on Article 24 is to approve the article as amended. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards.
Could we have some more discussion first?
Oops.
Could it be, Ted?
We can continue discussion, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ted.
Um, I was asked about how these rates, uh, compare to the state. We use the state rates for, what, two years, three years?
Yeah, we use the state rates for two and three years. These were the rates we used before that, and the state rates, uh, became a problem because we have a lot of equipment that we use in town that they don't use, and they have a lot of equipment on their rates that, that we don't have. So we decided to go back to the way it was before, and that's how the rates, uh, so the rates are our own town rates, but they are, there is, part of the state rates are involved in that, uh, decision, correct?
Yeah. Other comments on the amended article?
Yeah, could I just ask you to read that again? Because I'm not seeing how the suggested amended warrant gives the right to go back to the original price. I, I'm not seeing how that.
I think there was some acknowledgement that it doesn't make much of a change, but it seems to clarify, but, let me read it. Yeah, absolutely, yep. Uh, before I read it, are there other comments or questions on the amended article, Article twenty-four? Yes? So Linda, we're going to read it before we vote, okay?
The first time I read this article, it said it goes an additional dollar for each twenty-five cent increase in gas. Can they say a dollar per hour per machine or something? Because it looks like it's going up a dollar per gallon of gas for every twenty-five cents it increases.
Okay, so if you're, if you're concerned about that, we need another amendment, okay? Uh, we're now in the process of, we've adopted the amendment, and that'll be the process. But if you want to offer another amendment, then now, if we, we've adopted the amendment, now will be the time to offer further amendments. Question?
A simple question is, when, when they purchase a fuel from Boone's, do they, are they taxed exempt for the fifty-one cents that we have to pay to the state of Maine?
Good question. The treasurer can address that, hopefully.
The gas is purchased by road commissioners themselves, the town of Acton doesn't pay for it, so they are not exempt unless they are exempt as, uh, as their private business.
Further questions? Larissa.
Just a comment, actually. Um, as far as the legality of the warrant, the attorney for the town has looked over this warrant very carefully for the last couple of years, and this article has not, has remained unchanged, and I'm sure Mr. Gore's amendment would not change the legality of it. It, I, I just want people to understand that, I don't think there's a question about the legality of the article. It has gone through some fairly rigorous legal review by the town.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on the amended article?
All part of the dangers of looking at things too closely. Um, okay, so looking at the equipment, uh, it seems reasonable, you know, you start with forty-four, you add a dollar, you start with thirty-seven, you add a dollar. Um, so what happens when we're looking at cubic yards moved, uh, two dollars per cubic yard moved, uh, equipment attachments is a dollar twenty-five per hour, we add a dollar to that as well. And, uh, obviously, this is a question that should have occurred to me earlier, just looking at that article in its native form. But, uh, the question is sort of raised here at this point about changing these rates and changing them back again. Do the lower dollar amount rates, uh, apply to this, to this clause, or do they not? Or are we just talking about these larger dollar amounts of, of equipment that clearly burns fuel?
Question, does anyone answer the question about the application of this to equipment that does not burn fuel? Ted, you know?
Um, well, equipment that doesn't burn fuel would have its own rate.
Right, but we're increasing the rates when fuel goes up. If you're increasing the rates for something that does not burn fuel, I think that's Paul's question. Is that a question? I guess we can focus, Scott, on particularly, let's say, the, uh, the equipment attachments a dollar twenty-five per gallon.
No, no, we don't take advantage of that. We don't ask for more money for it, it's just an attachment. It's for like a street sweeper, power rig, compactor, you know, a bigger compactor, no, just a hand compactor. We do not ask for actual money for that.
Other comments or questions? Okay, to Linda's question now, we're going to read the amended article, okay? Under cost of operation, the above rates are based on fuel prices up to and including four dollars and thirty cents per gallon. The town of Acton will pay an adjusted rate of one dollar for each twenty-five percent change per gallon based on the fuel price at Boone's and Chapley on each Sunday. That's the amendment. Linda, question?
Where does it say that it will go back to the original price? Am I just saying that?
It doesn't. I, I, I think there's been acknowledgement by several people that this doesn't really change the situation, but it just clarifies what's happened, okay? I mean, there is interest in revisiting this next year, apparently. That's what they're going to do, my understanding, okay?
Thank you.
There's no attempt to solve this right now. Paul, you have a question or comment?
Well, the word increase is now the word change, correct? Yes, okay, so the implication here, and, and really the effect that is intended, is that we're not only accommodating increases, but when it goes back again, you know, so instead of using the word increase, we use change, which means change up, change back down. It would be adjusted back to the way it was in the first place, when it was four thirty per gallon or less. That's my impression. Part of the problem is we're stuck at a fuel price that's considerably less than four thirty a gallon. We're all trying to envision how this is going to work. And, uh, that's, yeah, it's no doubt that will happen.
Other comments or questions on the amended version of Article twenty-four? So we're voting on the amended version now. The motion is to adopt the amended version, which describe, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-four is adopted as amended. Article twenty-five. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars for the public, for public works to be expended as follows. We're not going to read the detail. Board of Selectmen recommend approve the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written, four yes, zero no, and one abstention. Is there a motion on Article twenty-five?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt Article twenty-five as written. Are there comments or questions? Paul.
Okay, the, the budget for public works, according to the warrant, uh, is unchanged from last year. You'll see at Article thirty-nine that we're going to be, uh, essentially legitimizing, uh, approving overdrafts for this year from public works. Uh, so I took the opportunity of adding those numbers that we're approving this year for last year, effectively for last year's budget. Uh, and if you factor that in, then this year, assuming there are no overdrafts, we're going to be going down six percent, six point four percent from last year.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-five? The motion on Article twenty-five is to adopt the motion, the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your purple card. If your hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-five is approved as written. Article twenty-six, see if the town will vote to raise one hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and appropriate one hundred eighty thousand dollars for road surfacing. The remaining balances to come from the road capital improvement funds, funds to be expended as follows, ninety thousand dollars for District One, ninety thousand dollars for District Two. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written, four yes, zero no, and one abstention. Is there a motion on Article twenty-six?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article twenty-six as written. Other comments? Paul?
This is the same amount that we approved last year for road surfacing. Are there other comments or questions on Article twenty-six?
Yeah, the reason for the difference between the one hundred and eighty and the one hundred and eleven is, uh, we get euro funds every year, and we put those into the road capital improvement fund, so the euro funds of last year will go into next year's fund, so the money's here ahead of time, and that, those funds have to be used on roads.
Other questions or comments on Article twenty-six? The motion in Article twenty-six is to approve the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-six is approved as written. Article twenty-seven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars for the transfer station under public works. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Is there a motion on Article twenty-seven?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article twenty-seven as written. Other comments? Paul?
Uh, this is the same amount that we approved last year.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-seven? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article twenty-seven as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If your hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-seven is approved as written. Article twenty-eight, see if the town will vote to raise eleven thousand, four hundred dollars and appropriate up to twelve thousand, four hundred dollars for the operation of the recreation department. The remaining balances to come from fees, donations, and revenues received by the recreation department. All money received in excess of twelve thousand, four hundred dollars shall go into the Acton Recreation Capital Improvement Account. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends to raise ten thousand, eight hundred dollars and appropriate twelve thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, is there a motion on Article twenty-eight?
I make a motion, we accept the finance committee recommendation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the finance committee's recommendation. Are there comments or questions? Paul?
Uh, this article, uh, was going to be going up, the, the raise portion, uh, the net budget from taxation was going to be going up six hundred dollars. This number, this recommendation is not an arbitrary, uh, number foist upon the recreation department. It's a result of having discussed, uh, with Ken Joy at, at one of our workshops, um, the specific, you know, what his vision for the next couple of years is for the rec department, and what specifically was needed, um, for the rec department in order to potentially make that work. And the ten thousand, eight hundred, actually, if you look at last year's warrant, you'll see that this, uh, recommendation is exactly the same as last year, and essentially maintains a flat budget for, for this apartment as well. Uh, and my understanding is that, uh, it, it is not an unreasonable number for the rec department, they can work within this, this budget without, uh, hardship. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-eight?
What did, yeah, what activities do the rec department currently offer?
Questions about the rec department, what are they doing? Anybody answer the question? Bill?
Yeah, they're, they're running things like the soccer program, which they can't get enough people to, to participate in, so that's all, by the way, so they do basketball primarily, and, uh, it's also a little bit of, uh, baseball, even though this year I haven't seen anybody in Cuba. But they do what, uh, athletics, and, uh, the town, uh, must have enough, uh, say, participants, uh, participants to, to operate.
Other questions or comments on Article twenty-eight?
Yeah, what's happened is the number of our kids are down, so they're not getting enough kids to form teams. So a lot of the kids are going to surrounding towns, or actually, our rec department has joined with Chapley and a lot of the teams. They are also starting to do something differently, uh, like family trips, um, to different, um, attractions that kids would like to go to, and they do those during the summer, so families can sign up and go on a bus trip to like, uh, the water slide in, in Socorro or something like that. But, uh, you know, it's, because the number of kids are down, the number of parents that are involved are down, so that's why they're having trouble raising money, because there's not a lot of people working in the recreation department. So if anybody wants to get up and volunteer for them, I'm sure, Ken Joy, we're sure you're enjoying having some help.
Okay, additional comments, wait a minute here. Michelle, are you going to talk to us as treasurer or as?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure, you didn't have some other issues here?
Nope, no issues.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to note that the, the town of Acton isn't really, um, active in their baseball program. They are supporting financially the Malsen Valley Little League, which has kind of taken over for the area where both Chapley and Acton and Newfield didn't have enough in their own rec departments to support a separate, separate function. They have, um, all the towns are now collaborating in with Malsen Valley Little League and appropriating money to, um, to support that program. Two thousand dollars.
Okay. Anna?
Every single program requires a fee from the parents for every child that you sign up. There is, I believe, a reduction if you sign up more than one child from your family, but every child has to, every child's family has to pay a fee along with whatever the town appropriates. So, um, you know, this is financial hardships, families can't afford to participate, and, um, and, yeah, it, it, it's not always about volunteering, people are working, people are working.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-eight? Bill?
The rec department recently purchased and put on, on site at the ball field, a concession stand, uh, the idea that they could be able to raise money to add to the, um, a non-designated fund, I guess you'd call it, but, uh, they are working to raise money themselves as well.
Other comments or questions on Article twenty-eight? The motion on Article twenty-eight is to adopt the finance committee's recommendation, which is raise ten thousand, eight hundred dollars and appropriate twelve thousand, four hundred dollars. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your, your purple card. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-eight is adopted as recommended by the finance committee. Article twenty-nine, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and fifty dollars for the conservation debate. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Is there a motion on Article twenty-nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article twenty-nine as written. Paul?
Uh, this is the same amount that was approved last year.
Dennis, comments or questions on Article twenty-nine?
Uh, this is a question, uh, directed at Ted Raisak. I don't know if I need to get up and ask, keep asking questions and stop keeping him awake, uh.
Would you please? Okay, additional comments or questions on Article twenty-nine? Seeing none, the motion on Article twenty-nine is to approve the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article twenty-nine is adopted as written. Article thirty, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars for the county tax. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends, recommends approval of the article as written. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article thirty as written. Other comments or questions?
Uh, this is also an article that we see every year. What's changed this year is that the period, uh, that we're, that we're appropriating for is eighteen months rather than one year. So the, the number's actually forty-two percent higher than last year. Last year was a little more than three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh, and that's as a result of the county's fiscal year change. Next year, we should see this be twelve months again, uh, but this year, it's a bit of a, between a rock and a hard place.
Other comments or questions on Article thirty?
We were offered a choice when it came out that we could borrow the money, but it would have to be borrowed through the county. They were going to take out a loan for all the towns that didn't want to pay it upfront. Uh, we weren't sure what the interest rate was going to be, and we also already have three loans outstanding with the, uh, remaining loan of the, uh, rev out, the brand new firetruck, and then a twenty-five thousand dollars for the windows. We chose to bring it to you to just pay it one time, um, and get it, and get it off the books. So we'll be paying one year in October and six months in December.
Other comments or questions on Article thirty? Seeing none, the motion on Article thirty is to approve the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article thirty is approved as written. Article thirty-one, see if the town will vote to, to raise and appropriate five hundred thirty-eight dollars for planning and development to be expended as the Forrester Stiten. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article thirty-one as written. Other comments? Paul?
Uh, this is the same amount that's been approved for at least the last four years.
Other comments or questions on Article thirty-one? Motion on Article thirty-one is to approve the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article thirty-one is approved as written. Article thirty-two, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred fifty dollars for cemetery flags, markers in repair of veterans' graves. Board of Selectmen recommend approval of the article as written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, we approve the article as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article thirty-two as written. Other comments? Paul?
Uh, last year, we approved fifteen hundred dollars for this article, uh, it's two fifty this year, so it's a decrease of a little over eighty-three percent.
Other comments or questions on Article thirty-two? Seeing none, the motion. Seeing on the motion on Article 32 is to approve the article as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article 32 is approved as written. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $65,262 for donations. There's a long list of folks who are eligible for these donations. For to select and recommend raise and appropriate $65,262. Finance Committee recommends the same, raise and appropriate $65,262. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the article as written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 33 as written. Are there questions or comments? Anna?
I would like to make an amendment to remove the Busy Workers 4H Club $150. We don't want anything from this town.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment? The amendment is to remove the $150 allocation for the Busy Workers 4H Club. Is there a second? Seeing no second, it stays there. The motion fails for lack of a second. So the motion on Article 33 is to adopt the article as written, which is raise and appropriate $65,262. Linda?
I have a question. What is GELIA?
Can anyone answer the question? GELIA?
Great East Lake.
Improvement Association.
Okay, and the Woodfords Family Service, that's out of Portland. I'm wondering why we've been asked...
Question is, what do they do, Linda, or who are they?
I'm wondering why we've been asked to donate to them.
Relative to Woodfords Family Service, can anyone answer the question as to what they do or why we were asked?
When these service agencies ask for money, they have to justify their need. If residents from the town of Acton are using their services, that is their justification. And at the time of, over the past year, there have been a few residents that have used their services to justify their request.
Other questions or comments? I'm sorry. Linda, do you want to get going? Okay. Other comments or questions on Article 33? Paul first and then you'll go to Tom.
In further answer to that question, I have the request letter from Woodfords. I won't burden you with the whole thing, but one paragraph says, "Woodfords served five Acton families last year through its primary clinical programs, which includes early childhood services, community case management, in-home support, therapeutic foster care, residential and shared living services, as well as psychiatry and outpatient services." Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Tom Cashin?
A question as to what the original request might have been from the Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance folks, and why there is such a large discrepancy. Is it, what was the understanding there between what would be allocated between the Square Pond and Moussum Lake Watersheds for their care and improvement versus the Great East Lake Watershed?
So we're now, the question is on the designation AWWA. Is that correct, Tom?
Correct.
Okay. Can anyone answer that question?
We gave them what they asked for. They didn't ask for an increase.
Other questions or comments? Tom, want to go again?
I just asked, did I question, I know, but they just asked Michelle.
Okay, let's not have a conversation here.
Yeah, we didn't, they didn't ask for an increase, so we actually reported what they asked for.
Okay.
I, when he had questioned me, I thought that they had asked for more, but it wasn't them. They asked for the same thing they got last year.
Other comments or questions on Article 33? Ted?
Yeah, these requests, some of them had gone up, and I can't remember which ones are now. But in order to keep the budget flat, we gave everybody that put in a request this year, we put forward everybody that put in a request this year what they approved last year. And it didn't put down any increases for anybody. And there are a few charities that were on last year that didn't put in for money this year. Am I correct, Michelle? Was there a couple of them that didn't apply this year? They're all there? Okay. So we were just trying to keep the budget flat, so we did that. There is one new one, which will be in the next article. We didn't want to put that one in there. We wanted you to have the opportunity to vote on that separately.
Additional comments? Paul on Article 33?
Okay, so as Ted said, the numbers that you see there are equal to, or in some cases, less. Actually, in at least one case, less than last year by, according to the question. So this number is 1.4% less than last year. But as he already mentioned, this next article includes $5,000. So if you lump them all together and all of it is approved, then collectively between the two articles, the charitable donations would go up 6.2% from last year.
Other comments or questions? Bill on Article 33?
Just a quick comment about the Acton food pantry. Last year, they got $3,000. This year, it was proposed the same $3,000. The food pantry said that they could get by the $500 left, so actually, the food pantry is down by $500.
Other comments or questions on Article 33? Seeing on the motion on Article 33 is to raise and appropriate $65,262. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article 33 is adopted and raised and appropriate $65,262. Article 34, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $5,000 for Ballch Lake Improvement Association as requested. For to select and recommend approval of the articles written, Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article 34?
Make a motion to amend the motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,000 to Ballch Lake Improvement Association. Yes, sir. Not any, that's a question.
Is there a second? Okay, so instead of going through, this is, we're amending from the beginning now. So the motion is to raise and appropriate $1,000. Other comments or questions on Article 34 as amended?
The reason I'm suggesting to go from the $5,000 down to the $1,000 is over the last three years, we've had several organizations from different lakes come in, and the town has voted to start them off at $1,000. And I was hoping somebody from Ballch Lake could be here to talk about it today, but I guess they couldn't make it.
Other comments or questions? Jack? Paul, you're going to go first? Okay, go ahead.
Is there any interest, I have a letter here from Ballch Lake making the request. Is there any interest in knowing the circumstances under which? Okay. Again, trying to spare you as much as possible here. In short, they're looking for the money to help control the spread of an invasive plant species called variable milfoil. This plant was discovered in Ballch Lake in 2001. Efforts to control the spread of the plant have been in place since that time. Eliminating the paragraph, Ballch Lake milfoil efforts are and will be ongoing for years to come. This effort is viewed as one of long-term management and control, not short-term eradication. In a way, sort of like snow, we know it's coming, we can't stop it, but we can manage it to the best of our ability. We ask that you can consider donating $5,000 annually to gain the control of this invasive weed. And that's in a nutshell what they're looking for.
Other questions or comments? Jack?
Yeah, I'd like to see us donate the $5,000. Anyone around here knows over in Waterboro, Lake Arrowhead, they're spending over $100,000. Lakes are our assets. We have to protect our assets. And $5,000 is not a lot of money to spend. You lose your lakes, you lose your tax base. We wouldn't have, you know, money for school budgets and new fire engines and everything else. So I hope everybody reconsideres and goes for the $5,000 bucks. It's a small investment for what it will provide to these people. And like I say, just check on Lake Arrowhead, and you can see what's going on. We have milfoil all around us, and it's not going to get better. And this helps to try to eradicate it. It's a real problem. Just ask the people in Waterboro.
Other comments or questions? Dennis on Article 34?
I don't really disagree with $5,000. But, and I voted this as a more financial amendment with much discussion. But a couple of issues that I had was, I tried to find out what the surrounding towns were donating as well. And they couldn't get any answers, because nobody came to Ballch Lake Association to let us know. And so we're going to be here today. And the other problem is, it was stuck with, is the fact that this milfoil really came from the New Hampshire side of the lake. And it's my understanding, so we're fighting that pot. And New Hampshire uses chemicals, I guess, to try to fight it, and maybe we can't. I just think there's a lot of questions unanswered. You know, we're the only town that's giving $5,000. I have no idea.
Other questions or comments on Article 34? The motion on Article 34 is to raise and appropriate $1,000. Barbara, you have comments or questions?
I make a statement and a question. In this, it does not say annually, but when Paul spoke, he said that they've requested $5,000 annually. So that's a big question.
Question about annual or not? Ted?
Right, we're just voting for this year, and if they want to come back next year and ask us again, then it would go on next year's warrant. But this does not tie the town into giving them that money every year from now on.
Other questions? Jack?
Just to answer Dennis's question, that milfoil could be dragged anywhere in the lake. It's something like down here at the foot of the lake in Shapley, we have the CPI. They check over 3,000 volts. It's nothing. It could be a little fragment like this. And as far as the only town contributing, there's only two towns that the lake borders on. Three, Newfield. Okay. But like I say, it's, you know, it's a small investment for what you have here. If you lose that lake, you know, eventually it spreads to other lakes and property values go down. So that's why I feel like we should invest the $5,000 bucks. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article 34? Yes, sir. The motion on Article 34 is $1,000, raise and appropriate. Yes, sir.
Is there any public access to that lake for Acton residents?
Questions on Ballch Lake, public access? Can anyone answer the question? Scott, you want to?
I don't believe there's any private access, but we do all the bridges.
Question was public access.
I mean, public access. It's mostly our privates.
Is there one on Acton Ridge Road? Back through the dam.
You can put a canoe or a kayak.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait. We've got a lot of people weighing in here.
It's got a gate across, I don't believe it's full public. I think it's just gated.
So Scott is talking about the dam situation. Is a gate there? Anybody else has a comment about where there might be other public access? It's welcome to come right up here and share that with us. Thank you.
There's a marina up in Newfield.
Thank you.
There's a marina up in Newfield or right by the town line, state line, Newfield, Acton, and Wakefield. You can put a kayak or canoe by the dam.
Public access is usually maintained by the state. I don't know if a marina is going to be private or public, but that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. Anybody else want to weigh in on public access for Ballch Lake? I see Mary and Tom coming forward. Mary, you're first up.
Not sure about the public access, but what I wanted to say is, you know, I might, I would have liked to hear if they were going to, you know, put a person, if there is a public access or at the canoe area and monitor. Because that's the only way you can do it, is the way they're doing it now at the other public accesses for Moussum and Square Pond. They put a person there to, you know, look at the underside of the boat and to see if there's any milfoil. So I don't know, like, what would the $5,000 be used for?
Tom Cashin, comments on Article 34? Okay, my answer, let Ted answer if he wants to, then we'll go with Tom.
What they presented to us is they have a quantum boat that they've turned into a machine that goes and pulls the weeds right out of the ground. And they have scuba divers that go along with it with air tanks or air hoses coming off the boat. So the scuba divers actually pull it out by the roots, and then they have a vacuum that sucks it right from the bottom up, trying to get as, you know, as few pieces flowing away as possible. But, I mean, it's like a seaweed field down there, and that's how bad it is for them. And like I said, the New Hampshire side is using chemicals, but maybe we can't. So they're actually pulling it out, and they have this boat. Bill, do you remember what they said the boat cost?
They got about $100,000.
Yeah, they got about $100,000 into this boat that they created in order to get it out of the bottom of the lake.
We have two boats.
Two boats?
Additional comments? Tom Cashin?
Just to put Jack Kelly's opinion, sometimes you have to lead by example, and I think this might be a case.
Other comments or questions? Paul, then Jack, if I may.
In somewhat answer to a few questions, I'll kick in the middle paragraph here. "The efforts to control have advanced in terms of volunteer and paid member participation. The members advancing, excuse me, the methods advancing from hand-pulling the plant by divers, still done today, being implemented by a diver-assisted suction-harvester dash, they're really big in the acronyms, dash boat, which has been in full seasonal use for the last two years. As you also may know, the state of New Hampshire allows the controlled use of herbicides, which we have been using since 2004. The approval process with that state is very controlled and takes several months and man weeks of effort to accomplish. Approximately 20 to 60 milfoil-infected acres are treated annually in the New Hampshire part of the lake. This is also very important in the state of Maine as the water flows from the New Hampshire end of the lake into and through the main body of water and out the dam on Acton Ridge Road. The volume of milfoil plants and fragments, which propagate easily, are to some degree controlled coming into Maine. An in-place boat inspection program at the Ballch Lake Marina has been in place for several years."
Other comments? Jack?
Yeah, just, most of these lakes, they have volunteers that patrol for these milfoils. So I can't speak for Ballch one, but most of them have, you know, they mourn it to the lake for, you know, looking for the milfoils in the shallow areas.
Anna, do you have a comment or a question?
I believe Ballch Lake falls in the Saco River corridor also, doesn't it not? So therefore, any milfoil could run downstream and infect the waterways all the way to the ocean.
Other questions or comments on Article 34? The motion on Article 34 is to raise and appropriate $1,000. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. The motion to raise and appropriate $1,000 fails. I think we're open for another motion.
Make a motion to approve Article 34 as written.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 34 as written. Are there comments or questions on this motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt Article 34 as written, please raise your card. Hands down, those opposed. Article 34 is adopted as written. This really does raise an issue about, this rarely happens in town, maybe where we defeat something. It raises an issue about having defeated something, and why, does somebody get a second crack at the apple there? And I think it's, you know, the article, the motion, the article is originally devised here for, right, it was sent for $5,000. So we deviate in an unusual direction. Now we came back to where we originally started. But that does raise an issue about when a motion to reduce an article is defeated. What is the expectation? I think what we had is notice given at $5,000 level. Isn't the original? So anybody that chooses not to be here expected to vote at $5,000. And we attempted to reduce it, but we went back to the original article where notice was given. And I think that was inappropriate, because I see nobody objecting to that anyway, so. Okay, so we're going to move to Article 35. So, a question?
Would that pass 34?
Yes, Article 34 passed at the article the way it was originally written, $5,000. Article 35, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $5,500 for dams to be expended as follows. Capital Dam Improvement Fund, $5,000. Ballch Lake Dam Operator Stipend. For to select and recommend approval of the articles written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article 35?
I make a motion to approve the article as written.
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 35 as written. Paul, do you have a comment?
Yes, just for the record, first of all, this is the same numbers, same amounts that we've approved the last couple of years. Just for the record, this is going to be the second year that the, that we've given a donation to the Sanford and Shapley Dam Coalition in the last article, actually, Article 33, $4,670. And that covers, the purview of that association is the same one as with the dam capital improvement fund in Article 35. So essentially, we're, we're giving that $5,000 to the same dams as are covered by the dam coalition. You know, not for or against, merely informative.
Questions or comments on Article 35? Does that mean that we're raising this money twice?
No, the money that was in the last article goes into the association. And the $5,000 is something we started two years ago because we weren't in the association, we weren't donating, so we decided to start a dam capital improvement fund here. The association came back and asked for the money again. Last year, once, when they voted for the donation into, through the charities, I made a motion to not fund the dam capital improvement fund because we'd already given them $5,000. But the town, last year, decided to continue to put $5,000 into our own where we have control, so that if something should happen, it will have funds in our own accounts.
Additional comments or questions on Article 35? Seeing none, the motion on Article 35 is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 35 is approved as written. Article 36, see if the town will vote to carry forward the following department fund balances and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated to the designated department. There's a whole list of funds, and then there is further, and to carry forward but not appropriate the following, there are three funds there. There, so I didn't, then further says, all other unexpended fund balances and revenues to lapse into the undesignated fund. Lapse school balances to be designated for school funding only. Board Select and Recommend Approve the Articles Written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written with four yes, zero no, and one abstention. Is there a motion on Article 36?
Make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 36 as written. Are there questions or comments? Paul?
This is a housekeeping article, changes from last year. We've added cemetery department funds and town hall building maintenance and repair fund. What's not here is the salt and sand shed, but that I believe is covered in the next couple of articles. That one actually had a shortfall, so it was really nothing carried forward this year.
Other questions or comments on Article 36? Seeing none, the motion on Article 36 is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 36 is approved as written. Article 37, see if the town will vote to transfer up to $40,000 from an undesigned fund to the capital improvement fund for future town improvement needs. Board Select and Recommend Approval of the Articles Written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion on Article 37?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 37 as written. Are there comments? Paul?
This is a new article this year, basically to goose the capital improvement fund from undesigned funds, just for, just as it says.
Other comments or questions? Larissa?
I see that in the previous article that we were appropriating, that we were carrying forward but not appropriating, in this article, are we giving permission to appropriate from that fund for anything specific? Okay, and then secondly, why opt to? Why not a set figure?
What we're doing is, we won't know how much money we have left from this year, and our treasurer has estimated that about $40,000 will remain, but we can't wait until we get our audit on to figure out how much that is. So we're estimating that there'll be $40,000 in reserve that we want to put forward, so we're just going to, we're asking to take it out of the undesignated fund, then when we know what the audit is, it'll be up to $40,000. But we'll only take out, we'll only take out what is left over from this year. And on your other question, we're not asking to appropriate any of this, but we are going to ask to appropriate some of it in one of the following articles.
Other questions or comments on Article 37? Yes, sir.
I just had a question.
Sure.
And I must hear the article 36, but brought up. Would this be used?
Get up to the mic so we can hear it all.
Would this be used, for example, for things like safety striping for town roads? Or could it be used for maintenance, things like crack sealing in town roads?
Just a question. What question as to what it might be used for?
This is a capital improvement fund for buildings that the town owns, so it would not be used for road maintenance.
Okay. Other questions or comments on Article 37? Seeing none, the motion on Article 37 is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article 37 is approved as written. Article 38, see if the town will vote to appropriate an expenditure up to $15,000 of the capital improvement fund, if the funds are available, for accessibility improvements to the town hall. Board Select and Recommend Approval of the Articles Written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion?
I make a motion and we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 38 to approve the articles written. Are there comments or questions? Paul?
Now, this is a companion article to number 37. Essentially, at the time it was written, it was unclear whether, the reason it says if the funds are available is whether or not Article 37 passed. So now the funds have been made available, and Article 38 appropriates some of them for a specific purpose.
Additional comments or questions on Article 38?
The purpose for this is, we need to do improvements for handicapped access to the town hall. If any of you walked up over that tired hill coming in the front door of the town hall, it's pretty difficult for people that, I saw a woman out there one day that had one of those cages with three legs and she could, had her car right there so she could pull up to her car and get down. So what we're going to do is a wheelchair ramp that'll go from the library over to the door of the old town hall where the wheelchair ramp is now. So it'll be a walkway that comes up, and then we'll level off going into the front door, and then we won't need the access into the old town hall anymore. So we're just coming up to federal standards to make sure the taxpayers can get into the town hall appropriately. We have up to $15,000, but we're assuming it's going to be cheaper than that, but we just wanted to be sure because we haven't gone out to bid. We just had a few estimates to come in, and if this is approved, that'll be started right away and we'll have it completed by the end of the summer.
Other comments or questions on Article 38? The motion on Article 38 is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 38 is approved as written. Article 39, see if the town will vote to ratify the transfer of $29,440.35 for fiscal year 2013. Overdrafts in the following accounts from undesigned funds. Sand and salt pile is $21,637.43, and the district one plowing sanding, $7,802.92. Is there a motion on Article 39?
I make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in Article 39 to approve the article as written. Are there comments? Paul?
This is a, certainly not a recurring article, and represents ratification of overdrafts from, basically having to do with winter weather for the past season, and effectively increases last year's budget. This money has already been spent, and it's just a matter of official town approval. The weather conditions in the last winter, we've had over twice as much snow in terms of inches as we had the winter before. It's generally considered to be more sound budget for an average year than for what might happen, and then just sort of pick up the pieces later.
Other questions or comments on Article 39?
We've gone over the last three years in a row, but because of the way we were doing the budget before, we were able to take funds from other departments in order to pay it, and then we didn't come forward and ask you to do that. But we broken all the departments up, so there was no money there for us to take and pay for the rest of the salt and sand. We're allowed to go over 15% in an emergency, so like this year, we had so many storms that we had to go out and buy so much more salt and sand that we went over, but we're under the 15%. So we're just letting you know that that happened. Now, the road commissioners had approached us and asked us to raise the salt and sand stockpile like $25,000 this year. And we decided since we haven't had to, you know, for the last three years, we've been able to find the funds to pay it. We didn't want to tax you for $25,000 more, just in case we got another bad year. So where we have to be, we're allowed to go over by 15%. We think we're covered, and where our undesigned fund last year was just under $1 million, we figured we'll have enough money to pay for the standard emergency.
Other comments or questions? Scott?
Yeah, for the district one plowing, we did have a FEMA storm this year, and the numbers are in the positive side, so once we get our FEMA money back, that will be deleted, and some of the $21,000 of the salt and sand, that number will be deleted from FEMA money we get.
Additional comments? Ted?
Yeah, I'm glad Scott brought that up. This is the first time that FEMA has decided that plowing snow is something that should be reimbursed, so we're actually going to get reimbursed for plowing the snow. Usually it's just damage to roads and things like that, but because the storm was so bad this year, FEMA is going to pay us back for plowing to, you know.
Michelle, comments?
We're still in the application process, but our expenses for that, for the two days that the FEMA is approving, is somewhere around $20,000. Of course, we're still going through that, it should be completed by the end of the month. That money we probably won't see until the later half of the year, and all depending on how the state works with their budget, we don't know when that will happen. But when that money comes in, it will go back into the undesigned fund, so by taking this money out, essentially a portion of that, probably around $17,000, will be reimbursed to the undesigned fund.
Additional comments or questions on Article 39? Seeing none, the motion on Article 39 is to approve the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 39 is approved as written. Article 40, see if the town will vote to accept any and all funds received from the state of Maine and the federal government. Board Select and Recommend Approval of the Articles Written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve the article as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 40 as written. Other comments? Paul?
This is a regular housekeeping article. Certainly, the spirit of it has not changed since last year, the verbiage has changed a little bit. It's perhaps a little broader now, and makes a little more sense than what we, the phraseology we used to use. But anyway, it is something that we see every year.
Other questions or comments on Article 40? Seeing none, the motion on Article 40 is to adopt the articles written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 40 is adopted as written. Article 41, see if the town will vote to appropriate the following estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation. Fiscal year 2013, 2014, municipal revenues unknown, municipal undesigned fund balance unknown. Board Select and Recommend Approval of the Articles Written. Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to amend Article 41 to read. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following estimated, oop, we're going to take out, estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation. Fiscal year 2013, 2014, municipal revenues $499,000. Municipal undesigned fund balance up to $200,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion on Article 41, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation. Now we have some numbers in the first article, oh, the first part of it, fiscal year 2013, 2014, municipal revenues $499,000. Municipal undesigned fund balance up to $200,000. That's the motion in front of us now, and we've been seconded. Are there comments or questions about the motion?
The reason we have the unknown in there is we stocked the warrant in February and worked our way through, and it's now getting close to the year, so Michelle was able to come up with some estimated figures as far as how much the town had brought in. As far as the $200,000 from the undesigned fund, we're putting that there in case we don't get anything from the state. In a way that their budget's going right now, we can't count on getting anything from them. So that will allow us to keep the budget. We won't have to increase taxes when we go to set the tax rate if the state comes next month and tells us we're not giving you anything this year, we'll take $200,000 out of the undesigned fund, or up to $200,000, and put it towards tax, to lower taxes.
Other questions or comments? Paul?
As stated, this did come up sort of after the fact, literally within the last couple of days, where we got some clarity on what these numbers, you know, should be properly as opposed to unknowns. The warrant finance committee has not discussed this, we haven't met since this came up. Personally, I think the numbers make sense and certainly preferable to unknown.
Other questions or comments? Question on what you talked about here, municipal revenues, that is not to be confused with revenue sharing that the state provides. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's revenues that come in through the town clerk, tax collective, not tax collective, the town clerk for registrations and things like that.
Other questions or comments on Article 41? Okay, what we're voting on now is an amended article to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation. Fiscal year 2013, 2014, municipal revenues $499,000. Municipal undesigned fund balance up to $200,000. That's the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 41 is amended, is approved. So we are now finished, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Oops, 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 oops.
Did you just vote in one shot?
Both, left, both.
Did we just vote to amend the article?
Yes, you're right, you're right, thank you, too anxious. Well, that brings up an issue before, because the, right from the beginning, we amended the article. We voted on an amendment made from the beginning. Well, I guess it's up to the moderator to decide yet. We're done, we're done. So let's go back and make a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? Thank you all, back up to the sunshine for adjourn.